All right, recording is going.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. It's January 4th, GBOS and UC joint special meeting. 4:00 PM, 4:01. So we will start with some couple of general announcements. Goodwater Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 meetings. Goodwater Board of Supervisors operates under the Goodwater Public Meeting Standards of Conduct, which can be found online. Call the meeting to order at 4:02 PM. And we'll start with a roll call of GBOS members and move on to LUC officers. So my name is Mike Hettleton, Co-Chair, LUC.
I have a second.
We've all been.
Yeah, they've been in period here. We just had a camera issue there.
Okay.
Keep the camera off for those. Sorry, at home, we're not going to have it in front so that we can keep the audio on, but they are, you shouldn't be able to ask the rest of the board members.
Okay, so other board members online, GBOS members?
Amanda Sassy, the Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you. And Brianna, are you there? Or Jennifer?
I am. This is Brianna, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor, Brianna Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer? I'm not hearing Jennifer. See if she joins us later. And LUC officers?
Kevin McDermott, Chair, LUC.
Ryan Hutchins-Bibby, Vice Chair, LUC.
Hello. Hi.
Shannon O'Briens here as well, LUC.
Hi, Shannon. I did see you on the list. Thank you. So for GBOS members, any disclosures? And Jennifer is just walking into the room. If you can do a, you can just announce yourself. You sit down and then we can start with disclosures.
I'm Jennifer Windcard, Road Supervisor, GPOS.
Do any disclosures from anyone on the board? Okay, not hearing any. We'll move on to agenda revision approval. We have in front of us the agenda. Do you hear our motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Jennifer. And second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And if there are no objections, we'll do this by assent. There are no objections. The agenda is approved. As members, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand physically or virtually. I want you to be acknowledged. If the discussion is still productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. So the agenda, item one, is review AO22-103, a sworn amendment. I think we can probably make that a little bit more general and just basically anything relating to this item. So the ordinance in front of the assembly for the whole hills disposal. So by way of background, we have a, there'll be a work session in this room at, I'm forgetting the time.
It's at five o'clock.
At five o'clock.
Friday.
On Friday. It'll be in this room and online. Is it, is it going to be online through our normal Teams link or through the?
It will be through our normal Teams link.
Okay.
Should be able to at least hear the audio for that.
Okay. So that's where the, that would be an assembly meeting, an assembly work session. And they will be talking about this ordinance and the various versions of the ordinance. And one of the, one of the things I'm hoping to get out of this meeting is, is a set of concerns and issues that we still want to, we want to make sure are addressed on Friday. Apart from that, we have three versions of the ordinance. There's the original version. There was an S version, which was, had a couple of additional conditions added, which were related, which came from the HOB Advisory Commission Ordinance Resolution. And then this thing, which is significantly different, which is the S1 version, which was drafted by Meg Zelletal. And died fully of France, of Suzanne, very Suzanne of France as well. So then the items in front of us. Any thoughts, comments, or discussion points anyone would like to start with?
I, I have one. I, I heard you say that you're interested in people's feedback about changes to the S1, but I'm also very interested in just basic yes, no, up, down. So as people respond or give us their feedback, I'd want to know if your general feeling is, is for or against the S1.
I'm, I'm, yeah, sorry to clarify that. I think, I think anything relating to this topic or the, the multiple ordinances which are in front of the assembly, that would be helpful. So whichever version, I think it's likely they'll start with the S1, but we don't know that until what you think actually happens on Tuesday.
Thank you. Just a question. For today's meeting, we can discuss anything, public input, people's views on this, but what's our where do we want to end this meeting? Are we making a vote today? We're going to hit the, we're going to meet with, and have another meeting on Friday with HOB and the Muni?
The, there's not another meeting with Friday with National Business Muni. There's an assembly work session. So it's an assembly meeting. They're just holding it in Gerwood. So that will be on Friday and they will discuss the ordinance, so various versions of the ordinance. And it gives them the opportunity to talk about it as a group, discuss amendments, people may want to talk about other things related to it. So it'll be a general work session. I, there will be at least two GBOS members who'll be, both Jennifer and I will be sort of sitting at the front with the assembly, ready for, ready to answer questions, maybe to make some statements. And I believe Emma as well is going to join from the HHHAC. And there will probably be other members of the administration there as well. That's on Friday. We, GBOS and LUC have another meeting on Monday. And I would suggest, although anybody can make a motion, I would suggest that it probably makes sense to sort of pull together concerns today, try and answer it or, you know, more information as we can on Friday. And then we have Monday as an opportunity for us to speak and, you know, put together a resolution, whatever.
And typically work sessions don't include public comment? Is that, will the public be invited to speak during this?
I don't know. Typically, they do not involve public comment. It's quite possible that this one will. I don't know. That's a question for whoever is chairing that, which I don't think is Suzanne. I think she's going to. She mentioned before the holiday, she was probably going to get someone else to chair it so she could contribute as a member.
Thank you for clarifying.
So to kind of add on to guys' question, there is, I'm not sure, you know, the objective with today's meeting is to come out with enough information or get any sense of the people at the meeting, if there's anything, you know, bullet points or a letter that we're trying to get out of this that could go and maybe forward it to the assembly tomorrow ahead of their work session. I don't know if that's not enough time or I think there's any value that, or input regarding this version specifically. Yeah, it seems like before they went to their work session, it would be nice to give them.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Only a question for staff. Are we able to get minutes from this meeting? In time for tomorrow? Would that, no. Okay.
But we will have on and so, yeah, I got too much other stuff. I'll just try to balance.
Okay. Then we can make a summary of the points until that's available. Send to the assembly tomorrow. I agree. That does make sense. Any comments from board members online? Amanda or Brianna?
Mike, can you hear me? I couldn't hear Kevin very well. But I'm following everyone's comments so far. I appreciate the questions and answers. I don't have any other, any other comments, but I didn't hear what Kevin said very well. Thank you.
Okay. Amanda, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. So in that case, it's, let's just throw it out for any general comments, questions, thoughts, unless there's anything else you want to, oh, sorry.
Well, I just start off, Mike, by saying, you know, this version S1, as you mentioned, is significantly different than the version S. And I'm I think Meg Zelletal put a lot of work into this and incorporated many of the comments that the community made. So anyway, I feel like maybe for the first time in a while, the assembly is listening to, you know, community members in Gerwood. And I think, you know, this is a pretty, this to me represents a good faith effort on part of the assembly anyway. And, and I wonder how much of this is, is run by HOB and CY Investments. Previously, my assumption with the version S was that that had already passed through CY Investments and there'd be a passive understanding that, you know, what was on version S was acceptable to them. I don't know if that's still S1, but anyway, just, you know, from my perspective, I think I guess primarily Meg Zelletal and Susan LaFrance I think done a good job of implementing comments put forth by the, the community. And I just wonder, is this more than what CY Investments will agree to? Or, or do you have any sense, or Emma, I don't know if you have any sense if there's been any further discussions with CY Investments, if if they're on board with this? Do you have any sense?
Yeah, I can answer the mechanical question of what's happened. So I know this, this version has been seen by the the Assembly Attorney, the Assembly Council Municipal Department for HOB and CY Investments. I don't know if they had, if they agreed with everything or not. I don't know. That's a completely reasonable question to check on Friday.
Thanks. That's all I had.
Sorry, right.
I'm on the telephone. Can you hear me?
Who's that speaking?
Derek, can you hear me, Mike? This is Brett Willbanks. I'm on the telephone and I'm just actually about to walk in.
Can you put your hand up if you want to? I don't know that we've actually finished the, all the board members. Do you have your hand up, guy?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I'll recognize you, Brett. Go ahead. Go ahead, Brett.
Got a star back in.
Oh, sorry. Is it star six?
Star six.
Star six, Brett, if you're trying to speak.
I'm just about to walk into the room. I didn't want this closed off before I had a chance to comment. So let me just walk into the room here.
Okay. You had your hand up as well, Matt. Why don't we go, you go first, if you can come to the front and speak.
Hi, Matt Chechter, resident of Gerwood. In light of the S1, I've been kind of looking at the numbers around this and there aren't many numbers, but I can just basically say in summary, the math doesn't. So between the profitability, the limited P and L statement that I received for the joint venture, for this HOB CY Investments joint venture to what's in the S1, the profits for that investment have been cut in half. And so we have no explanation as to why those prop, expected profits from phase one and phase two of the HOB have been cut in half. The interesting thing is that because we don't know that, if those profits are actually down because costs are solely going up, it's actually my expectation that the fees to CY Investments will actually be higher. So if people are expecting as a 50/50 joint venture with this project under the numbers that I originally saw that date back to August, the numbers, if I was to actually get financial disclosures from now, it actually probably show the, the profits skewed towards CY Investments and not to the city of Anchorage and the taxpayers. We also don't have a cash flow statement to assess the timing of cash flows. So any cash that's promised to us in an S1, we have no projected cash flow statements as to when we would actually see the money. So anything in the S1 regarding to expected cash is kind of a lost skill. The other thing that's going on is in relation to the fair market value of the land, which in the S1 is, is rated at $2.1 million. So based on that, that comes out to about $23,000 an acre for, for sale for there. And as most people, some people may know, but others don't, it's that, that, those are based off of Anchorage comps. And those were done last year, so about a year ago. And so those Anchorage comps included five properties which were valued between $6,000 to $20,000 and then one property which was valued at around $100,000 in terms of property. In the last year, we've had three properties up on Crow Creek Road, small parcels, mind you, but three properties up on Crow Creek Road, undeveloped land off the grid that if you look at the offer price in the MLS have gone between $150,000 to $200,000 an acre. And there's a, there's a four par acre parcel of land which was just put off the grid, which if you look at the offer price is being offered at $105,000 an acre. So I know parcels of land aren't identical, right? But that's undeveloped, far off. That's not even close to town. My belief is that that $23,000 per acre number is way too low. And if they were to actually try and sell that land outright, they should get a much higher bid for that land. And so if we actually had a bid for that land that was more reasonable fair market value, the city of Anchorage can actually collect those, that cash upfront and then reinvest it back into Gerwood. This JV in this S1 does nothing of the sort. We basically need the JV scrapped. We need the land, in my opinion, sold outright where the cash can be reinvested towards affordable housing. So that's, that's how the numbers kind of at a high level sort out. To me, I'd also like to point out to people that the JV is incurring debt associated with this project. By back of the envelope, how based on basic, limited financial information shows that they're going to have to borrow about $6.5 million. If somebody has a better number, they can prove me wrong, but that's based on the interest rate and the payback. The expected profit in the, the S1 for HOB is $1.2 million. So if you double that, you say the profit for the JV as a whole is $2.4 million for phases, phase one and phase two. So if you borrow $6.5 million, but you're only going to earn $2.4 million in profits, how do you pay back the loan? Now, we don't have disclosure for phase three of the project, which is an issue unto itself. So we have no idea whether that's going to be the big profit finanza or it's going to be a huge, you know, loss leader. We don't know because CY Investments won't disclose it. They didn't disclose it in the numbers that I had. I know that the assembly members don't have those numbers. So I get when it comes back to, well, who's going to pay for, who's going to pay back that debt? It's not clear. So that's my assessment of the numbers and that's my statement.
Good. That's good.
Wait. No, I was just saying, you might want to just stay right there from within this, if you don't mind. No, please go ahead.
So you mentioned that the profit's gone down by half, that the S2 mentions that $1.2 million for HOB.
Yes.
So where was the, just for my notes, where was the, the higher number? What was that in?
So there's, there was, there was in, there was a P and L that was actually on the HOB website that you could click on to. And what it showed was, it showed an income statement. It was basic. It shows like two line, one line of revenue. And I wanted to point out for the revenue that, so people understand they were projected, CY Investments and, and the HOB were projecting to sell this property for about, I think it was about $0.5 million an acre. If I got my numbers right. So they were going to basically turn a $23,000, you know, quote unquote, piece of property and turn it into $0.5 million. Like I, I do investing for a living. Like I'd love to get that return. Right? So I, I don't, so maybe if they were paying $150,000 for the acre and trying to get $0.5 million, like, okay, you know, after you put in all the development costs, but boy, that's an unbelievable return. That land is only $23,000 an acre. So the, the income statement only has base level of revenue, has on strike construction costs. It has interest expense. It has marketing fees. It has a couple of developer and marketing costs, which apply to tie back to Connie and then a couple of other line items. But it's, it's basically like eight lines long, but it pulled me in off.
Right. So your assumption is that enough has changed since August. The, the sale price has dropped unlikely, or costs have gone up or some other changes.
Yeah, we have, no, we have, I have no basis to determine how, you know, actually change. But there is a scenario where the P and L changes clean and it's more advantageous to Connie, but I can verify that.
Because of fees, yeah.
I'm starting, are you?
Yeah, that's my first one.
Okay, all right. Thank you for this because I think this is super important information. So, and I know we've talked a lot, but I still have more questions and I also have things that I'd like people to hear. Say, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So out of the out of this expected the expected revenues, the, this business of 1.2 million, right?
Yeah, it was based on, yeah, the, the, the original P and L had revenues of about $17 million in there to get to a, to get to a profit for the entire JV of $4.5 million. That was the original numbers. Now we're dealing with an unknown revenue number to get the profits of total of the JV of 2.4 million, of which 1.2 million goes to HOB. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yes. So, so HOB is, now that includes both phase one and phase two.
Correct.
So if phase two isn't ever built, which is a concern for many people in the community, that means HOB makes less than 1.2 million. We don't know how much was.
Yes.
Right? But I don't think anybody knows. It's not in the numbers. So there's no way of knowing if phase two is never built, how much.
Correct. Correct. And going back to the original limited P and L that we saw for phase one and phase two, phase, phase one actually has the higher profit margins. Phase two has the lower profit margins, which is somewhat counter to what I would have expected from, I think, when Connie was talking, she was talking about upfront costs and that they would be recovered over time. The, the numbers that I've seen, and I have to, I just have to go back and check my email because I also relayed that on to, I think, the assembly members at one point. But, but her, her expected profit margin is like, before taxes is like 26, 27%. But a lot of that's coming upfront in phase one.
I think that's why there's community concern about that phase two never being built.
Still, there's some explaining how she's going to pay back the loan. Assuming, assuming that, right? I don't know how that gets covered. It's not clear from the cash flow statement because there's no capital statement. Income statements are great, but they're somewhat meaningless if you don't have a cash flow statement accompanying. Great. You have revenues and costs. You have no idea what the timing of this thing.
You have one question?
No, I, I've stopped now. Maybe later. Any other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Recognized, correct?
Thank you very much, especially for your patience with the telephone. So I wanted to, my name is Brett Willbanks. I'm current Chair of the HOB Advisory Commission. And I just wanted to make sure to communicate in your deliberations here with this S1 version that you're looking at. Just make you aware that the HOBAC, the last action before approving of the disposal was a bit of language in the resolution. I don't know if you have it in your packet, but it specifically says that without the conditions that the HOBAC deliberated on, considered and imposed on the disposal of the land, that the HOBAC determined that it would not be in the public's best interests. So another way to read that is that it's important that those conditions that HOB considered after the public input process were important enough to be included in their entirety in order to be in the commission's opinion in the public's best interest. And I've been observing these different iterations of the AO proposals in front of the assembly. And it occurs to me that even in this latest revision S1, it falls short of those minimum conditions that HOBAC approved when they considered the disposal of this land. So specifically there's omissions and then there are softening of the conditions in this S1 proposed version. So I just felt that it was important enough to communicate the commission's process and, and thought and deliberation about those conditions. And specifically the language that describes that that commission as a body expected those conditions to be implemented entirely and, and not piecemeal. And so that's what I can say from the commission's point of view as chairman. If there are any questions, I'd be happy.
My immediate question is, can you go into a little bit detail, more detail about what was in the original HOBAC and is missing in the various forms?
Very good. So I did send a letter as chairman of the HOBAC to GBOS describing on each individually, but I'd be happy to answer questions particularly on those. It, it's quite a lengthy and without the material in front of me.
I recall the prior conditions that I may be.
There were, so.
Okay, I'm pulling them up right now.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Scott.
Very good to be, to be specific.
Now that's a summary of them, yes. And it does not have the complete language of the HOBAC resolution. That's a summary of the HOB resolution.
This was the resolution that was signed.
Here we go. There you go. There you're finding it. There's a, up above. There you go, right?
Yeah.
There. Whereas the last whereas.
There it is.
Yeah. And because of the several iterations of this, and I would encourage you to go back to the actual public meeting and the record thereof. It's specific language in the adoption of the last whereas, which has been softened in this document. That, that was proposed as an amendment and approved by the body to say specifically that all the conditions were required in order for this disposal to be in the public's best interest.
Sorry, just for clarification. Are you saying that the resolution which was presented to the assembly does?
The language has changed several times in this whole process between the time that HOBAC went through the November vote.
Right.
Okay, that this language in this has been summarized over the process of these last several months.
Right.
And I would encourage a focus on the detail in that meeting when this resolution was on, in front of the body. And specifically, the amendment said those conditions are required in order for this disposal to be in the public's best interest. And what we see in front of us in this latest S1 version, those conditions are not there in their entirety.
I, I think my, my question may have been misunderstood here. I misphrased it. What I wanted to check is, I believe the thing that's in front of us on the screen now is the resolution that came out of the HOB Advisory Commission. Is that exactly what you passed? The thing that's on the screen now?
That is a summary bit of length, subject to conditions. And you can read it as literal at the very end. Go down. There you go. Find the disposal, subject to conditions. It's specifically these conditions that on the on this resolution to dispose of that are required to put it in the public's best interest.
Right.
And I think it's important that those conditions be considered
Right.
in the public's best interest as a minimum, as a minimum set of conditions. And those minimum set of conditions aren't met in the S1 version.
Right. So in any version that gets passed at the disposal ordinance, your, the, the position of HOBAC is that if it doesn't meet exactly those, then
As a minimum requirement.
It will no longer be in the public interest and effectively it isn't approved by HOBAC. Got it? Thank you.
That's what the body decided, yes.
Understood.
Yes.
Okay.
Interesting question. I think Mike explained it a little bit. So where is HOBAC on the decision-making process now? And what's his best plan to go through or whatever, form the best with luck, you know? Does it come back to your table or does the assembly take note of that and go forward?
Great. Thank you, you know, through the chair. So. Great. Thank you, um, you know, through the chair. So, um, we are, the H L B A C has done their duty. And, uh, that disposal has come before that body and there's no further action for the commission to take, uh, with regard to it. Um, so this is, as it's been noted before, advice. It's well considered through public process. We heard a lot of folks from, you know, Girdwood and, uh, um, we considered things that could be done, um, in the meeting uh, with the attorneys there, you know, they concurred that those are things that legally could be done. And, uh, we felt those were a well-measured set of minimal conditions that a minimum had to be met in order for this to be in the public's best interest. So that was the end of the advice of H L B A C. Um, and, uh, yeah, I don't believe there's any further action.
Thank you.
Sure. Is that question, is that a question?
Yeah, I guess. Um, so on these, uh, changes to these conditions, what do you, in your opinion, are the most, are the most significant changes that have occurred between, uh, the, your boards, um, you know, uh, finding in the public interest relative to what is showing up in this.
Right.
Current version.
Thank you. So, uh, there's a couple of different things. One of them, um, specifically is construction access via High Tower Road. The body deliberated that the plan shows access from Crow Creek and that's how it should go. And if you're going to work through High Tower, then you should limit construction access because the impact studies and the site-specific studies were, um, I guess, elected to not be done. And instead, uh, H L B, with which the commission is a separate body, an advisory commission, but the H L B decided to use the Crow Creek Neighborhood Use Plan. And instead of doing that site-specific study, there has been no impact studies about the construction impacts via High Tower Road. That was done, uh, Crow Creek Neighborhood Use Plan. But it's not being considered like it should have been considered potentially, um, the impacts to High Tower. So they advised to, you know, put construction traffic through there and use the plan and go via Crow Creek Road. So that's one that's missing. Um, the other was in the H L B A C's uh, amendment or condition for 25% of the multifamilies to be used as long-term apartment-style, long-term rentals only. That solution provided public, uh, private, I'm sorry, private investment to build vertically to address the immediate supply issue of long-term housing. The S1 version uses the same 25% number, but attempts to solve that by placing in front of Girdwood a challenge. A challenge to come up with public money to build vertically in order to have long-term rentals available. So if you look at this, Girdwood is at a disadvantage by not having private money coming in to build vertically with the deep restriction that says those would be long-term rentals only. Now, there's an opportunity, I guess, or the challenge for Girdwood to source public money to attempt to build vertically, to attempt to put those units into the long-term market. So these were well-considered conditions in that it allowed, uh, long-term rental market supply. To put that into supply for workforce-type housing, right?
Based on that, would it be, uh, the fact that these, uh, things that you found with the minimum to be acceptable relative to, um, I guess, public process or piece of response to this moving forward? And the fact that this current version of the S1 doesn't counter that, because the debt need is, is really, well, it certainly doesn't reflect towards you, right?
Correct.
But it certainly, I mean, beyond that, it's just seems like it's, we now have a proposal that doesn't, you know, doesn't respond to the needs or anything that's fading off. That's just my take from what you're saying.
Um, well, it is a body of citizens serving as commissioners on the advisory commission, H L B Advisory Commission. And, uh, and I know that it took a lot of time to consider and listen to what was going on and, and, uh, um, trying to, you know, get something, did something that alleviates some of the issue, you know, and alleviates some of the impact, um, and, uh, and enforces the trust and communication between the local community and those types of developments going on are reflected appropriately in here. But, um, S1 still falls short of meeting the minimum requirements from the H L B A C at this point. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Okay. Just one question. So you, you could fairly say then that, uh, the H L B A C has never voted on this version, well, not even this S1, sorry, but that, that beta, because of the language you inserted is, it needs to, it needs to meet these qualifications. And because this is less than that, you would agree that this is less than what you guys added on? So functionally, the H L B A C has not approved this disposal.
Yeah, the body, uh, agreed, uh, with that amendment. It was discussed specifically about having the conditions and about how that meets the, uh, obligations, uh, to, in the public's interest. And so, uh, the body did deliberate on that and it was decided as a group that they were necessary. Otherwise, without the conditions, it just, uh, did not meet uh, what the body felt as being in the public's best interest. So it was important enough to discuss as its own item. And that's why I felt it important enough to communicate it to you as you consider your support or not of, uh, the A O.
Thank you.
Okay.
So just to continue on from that point, the, the original ordinance, um, ignored all of those conditions, I believe, the one coming from H L B. And then the, there, the, the H L B's S version of the ordinance, um, I think included three of them. I think that's it, isn't it? Or two at least. I think including one, two, and five, if I remember correctly.
Oh, and I, and, and the different, the other difference, I'm sorry, thanks for the reminder, is looking here. Thank you, Mike, is the change in the short-term rental restriction, the provision or prohibition that says, uh, you know, in the Hilton Hill developments, no short-term rentals, uh, which we defined as a body of 30 days or less. But I noticed that the S1 version, that was eliminated for single-family homes with ADUs and that they would be allowed to do short-term rentals in their ADUs. And it seemed that, uh, it, it, if there is a problem with supply, that the, that the fear was additional short-term rentals would reduce from the long-term rental supply. So the thinking was to, uh, increase the amount of long-term rentals in the supply. And by reducing or prohibiting short-term rentals in this development. Now, it's important to note that there is a sunset provision in that requirement that says when there's regulation regarding short-term rentals in Girdwood, that this preclusion of the HOA would go away and be dissolved and it wouldn't be precluded. And everybody can live under, you know, the same rules. Okay? Nothing special. So that's an important change as well. It seems to miss the point of the condition.
Yes. Want to watch the?
Yeah, go ahead.
Brett, um, in, in this version, it, speaking of the Crow Creek Road access, it says the completed development will include infrastructure. You're primarily, you're concerned with, I mean, construction access because it could, it could be 10 years before the sayings concluded. I, I know we did hear from the people, um, from Crow Creek that access, that access is concerning to them, um, and probably a lot of things need to be worked out before it's acceptable to, you know, people that live up there and everything else. But I, I think you, you, you have heard some of that feedback as well.
A little bit. I've actually, you know, I've walked this stuff, you know, and looked at it and the width of the road at High Tower versus the width of the road on Crow Creek. And I, I look at the density on High Tower and the traffic versus the density on Crow Creek. Um, the, the, the bottom line is there has to be ax- secondary access one way or another. And so there's going to be access via Crow Creek, I mean, one way or another. So those concerns have to be, you know, taken as a whole, that, you know, eventually there has to be Crow Creek access. So the concern is that doing initial construction access via High Tower is such a huge impact. And then it goes, it goes without any site-specific study, which is actually a requirement. So, um, if that's going to be skipped, then working under the authorization of Crow Creek Neighborhood Use Plan shows that both the accesses are via Crow Creek Road technically. There is no access via High Tower Road. Um, so it's this balancing act of old plans and new ambitions, I think. But the impact is clear. And if there are no mitigative measures done via conditions to the development, then there, it's just going to be what it's going to be and it will be a long-term impact that's not studied, that's not understood at this point.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just curious what the, what the board, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm civil environmental engineer, do a lot of, you know, public agreement, you know, bidding on things. I've never, ever heard of a winning team winning a bid or a contract or a qualification and experience, and then the team dissolving. And then if still receiving it ordinarily, that would be thrown out and the next person in line or it would be redid. What is, how, how does this affect the fact that the team dissolved and, and, you know, what is it going to end up in the board or is that, is that a concern? Is it, is there a legal challenge, well, potentially relative to that particular contract?
Um, well, all interesting questions and, uh, ripe for discussion, I'm sure. Um, so the, put this in, the H L B Advisory Commission is a panel of citizens serving as, uh, advisory commissioners, right? And so we're not busy to, uh, a lot of that, uh, day-to-day things that are going on. And it's generally reliant upon the plan approved by the assembly is put forth by the H L B A C. So that, they kind of work towards that, uh, long-term plan is generally what happens. So, um.
You're not involved.
We're, and so, yeah, we're just, yeah, it's basically advice on when a disposal can look like this, you know, and it, and it is, we may consider things that, uh, and advise those things, but it's, they're not, it's not incumbent on the mayor or the assembly to follow the advice. But I just wanted to reiterate it, well-considered. We're not in, you know, we're involved in the periphery and, uh, and, and I would say that that, that those conditions are not reflected in the final S1 here. Okay, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Did you have a question, Emma? Um, just, I'll move here so I can get my, um, Brett, just one thing. Uh, thanks for all the work you do for Girdwood. I just felt the need to sort of clarify one factual point about Crow Creek Road. Um, in that Crow Creek Neighborhood Development Plan, from what I understand, one of the suggestions for using Crow Creek was because it was going to be paved. The original intent was that it would be paved all the way to the mine. At which point it was discussed about joining the Girdwood Service Area. There was like loose discussions. So the paving stopped at the bus turnaround, as we know. And so I see a huge financial, you know, black hole of misunderstanding on Crow Creek myself. So it's not a matter of, uh, traffic from, you know, from my perspective, it's more another, um, can of worms of unknown. So while I agree that secondary access is important, it's disturbing that there's no, um, estimates on what it will cost to. So just on that point, thank you.
I don't know if there's any, did you want me to add to any of that?
My name is Esther. Speaking to my ear.
I've got another unfair question for you, Brett. So in the, the S1 version, there's a lot of, um, requirements, sort of, really additions on, on H L B or recommendations for H L B. Um, I wondered if you had any thoughts. I know you kind of speak as the, as the whole advisory board, but just as a member, I wondered if you had any thoughts on those. So, um, for example, um, there's one message about the, the H L B work plan, um, about, uh, you know, it has to, it has to, as a former, take into account um, the work that's going on in the chain, work that's going on to update the Girdwood area plan. Um, again, I wondered if you had any thought on that. The intent to provide, um, a more attainable housing to a range of income levels. Um, or is there, there was another thing specifically for, that they, there should be a commitment to the, that the municipality and H L B typically uh, should have a greater degree of transparency. There was a requirement for a liaison person until there's a permanent director who's been in position for at least six months. Um, and a couple of comments about how H L B calculates, um, return benefit to the municipality. I wonder if you had any thoughts on those, if you, I mean, if you have.
I'm going to read it.
Quite a myriad of questions. Uh, several of those, uh, should be directed directly at H L B staff. And then those are outside of the purview of the advisory commission as a.
Okay.
Um, I know we've been, uh, um, there have been staff turnover and we've been asking and ready to get into the five-year work plan. And, uh, we're still waiting on that. Uh, and I have no further notice of upcoming meetings regarding that, but we keep asking for that because it's, uh, it's due. Um, so I don't have anything to report on that. Um, and as far as, um, any of the other, um, conditions uh, within the S1 version, I can't speak for the body, uh, on that. But I, I can only speak for the body on the resolution that was passed, um, that we just talked about. Our, our H L B A C, um, resolution conditions that I can officially speak on. But I don't, wouldn't have an official, uh, response to the.
Understood. That's why I was asking you as a, as a member of the body, as an individual, what is the.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
That's right. So like specific, I'll just ask two specific questions then. So one of the, um, uh, one of the, uh, whereas is, is, uh, return on investment by H L B should not be viewed in strictly monetary terms, but overall benefits to the municipality of Aggook. So it should be much broader than monetary terms. And I don't think it's always clear in the way that H L B has presented information, that they consider it much beyond, uh, the financial side of it. So again, I wondered if you, as an individual, have a, have any thoughts on that?
That there are tangible and intangible benefits, uh, in many different ways. And I can see that it could be argued that just bringing the construction activity is a tangible benefit to the community. And so that there, I think there's a vast spectrum there of benefit, okay? And I'll, um, hmm, and I can just pretty much leave it at that. And, and I would say that anything in the S1 that's beyond what was recommended or advised, um, I think that recommendation from H L B A C is a starting point. And anything beyond that, you know, personally, I'm all for, you know, if you're asking me personally, I'm all for it. But I think recognizing the minimum and then moving on from there, I guess, is the message I'd like to pass on. Thank you, quite frankly.
Questions?
Uh, yeah. So you mentioned, um, the, uh, five-year plan, which, uh, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors did a work session on. I think we were meeting, we had a conversation about that last April, I think it was April, and the meeting was canceled. And Crystal mentioned about this as well. Uh, and then nothing has happened since. And there, if, if I'm not mistaken, just clarifying that with you, and then also there's, uh, typically an, uh, an annual work plan as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then typically you would, as part of reviewing that, also review the, the H L B budget.
Yes.
And that has not happened.
Yes, we have not had those meetings.
Right. Okay. Just clarifying. Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Brett, how much input does the H L B A C have in the, uh, one-year work plan and the five-year work plan? Is that something that typically the H L B, uh, gives to the advisory committee, you know, for input and then releases it? Or is it sort of like, here you go? And then just as a comment, you know, it's regardless of this, uh, version S1, I think, um, it's a credulous that the biggest land dispersal the muni's ever done wasn't even in a, oh, H L B work plan. So that's just a comment, not asking you to, to reply to that, but as H L B A C, how much input do you guys have in that work plan?
Great, great question. And, uh, um, so it comes in a, a packet and, uh, generally redlined and we are ready to meet as a body to discuss those things. So we do have input into those. And I think, um, when that process, we just, we're going to get started in that process when G. get started in that process, when GBOS, or Land Use Committee, was it, tried to look at the five-year plan and having input, this came up quite some time ago, nine months or so ago. And so, yeah, and that was in anticipation of having input to that product for approval by the Assembly after it passed the HLVAC. And, but that process has stalled, and I'm just offering that, you know, perhaps a lot of that was the staffing issues that were going on, but we keep asking for that to happen, and I, I'm anticipating it will happen, it's required. So, yeah. Thanks. And we should have good input to that, and the, I look forward to good discussions as to the modifications that could be made in looking forward in that five-year plan. Yeah, for sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for the detailed call.
Appreciate it.
I see Kelly, your hand is up. Go ahead. We're not able to hear you. If you're speaking, Kelly, we're not able to hear you.
Okay, I am trying to get to a place with better service and maybe pull over. Is that any better?
Yes, that's very clear now, thank you.
Okay, so my question is, again, around this public benefit, and, you know, we briefly discussed the financials. And, you know, what I noticed in, in reviewing some of the, the required documents is that there's meant to be like a two-page summary, including a quantitative assessment as you're determining public value. And, and where I feel some confusion and frustration is that the, the profit and loss statement is for the JV, and that shows the, you know, total benefit now to HLV of the 1.2 million, but that's independent of the cost for offsite improvements. And so we don't see anywhere a total profit and loss for HLV. And I think I saw somewhere that there was a $10 million estimate for offsite improvements, 2.5 is a grant for AWU, which leaves 7.5 of investment, independent of anything that needs to be done of Crow Creek Road, which sort of shows a negative profit of like in the, on the range of, you know, negative 6.3 million dollars to HLV. Did, did the HLV Commission, Advisory Commission, look into this? Or, or can you offer any insight, either representing the body or representing what you understand about anything, and/or where that should have shown up in the process or showed up in your review in terms of public benefit? That's a big black hole for me, and I'd love any insight you can offer on it.
So Kelly, just to clarify, that's a question for the HLV Advisory Commission or the Chair of primarily?
Yeah, for Brett, sorry, I, I had my hand raised to.
That's fine, that's okay. I missed that.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Brett.
Thanks, this is Amanda.
Kelly.
Kelly. No, that's Kelly Ockman.
Okay, right, so I can just tell you what we received. And we received a one-page pro forma related to this disposal during our full-body meetings there, starting in, it was the middle of, I don't have the exact dates, but it was the November meeting. And we got a, we got a one-page pro forma on the financials, and that's what the body considered.
So that one-page pro forma is the one that we were discussing earlier, which says the 1.2, and I think there's, that's like for the provisions of 8.3 in the development agreement, and it's, it's specific that it doesn't include the four elements in 8.4, and those four elements are the offsite improvements, the section line removal, the wetland study, and the rezoning for the school. But we don't see anywhere what the estimate is for HLV to pay for those four elements, and therefore what the total profit and loss is for HLV. Do you agree that we're missing that information, or do you have any insight into where that information is, or, or anything else to say there?
Well, I don't know exactly what information you have, but I will say that there was just a municipal audit done, and there are audit documents available showing all of those accounts as far as what has been expended. I don't know, because I'm not privy to, and the HLVAC is not privy to any specific financials with regard to this project as it moves forward, and it's not in the, necessarily in the body's purview. They haven't decided to share those particulars.
Okay, so it remains a black hole. Thank you for your perspective on that.
Thanks, Kelly.
So, sorry, can I just get a follow-up? Just, so just, thanks for all your time. You're saying then that when you guys were, sorry, when HLVAC was talking about the public benefit of this, you essentially weren't really able to do a financial analysis on this based on the information you were given, that your understanding of public benefit was just based on what was happening from what you could tell on that one-page pro forma, but more precisely what was happening for the Girdwood community and the Anchorage community?
At large, yes, right, right. And, and, you know, and that came up during the body's discussions, you know, a little bit about, you know, what some of those benefits are, and it's, you know, not always, not always just making money, and that's why these conditions were important, because it, the body felt that hearing the concerns of Girdwood during that process, that there were things that could be done, offered benefit that were non-monetary, such as restricting the STR use within Holton Hills to provide more supply for long-term rental availability. And, and I will say that if you review the record, I did propose a 50% of the multifamilies to be dedicated to long-term rental only, deed-restricted long-term rental only, but that wasn't accepted by the body, and, and I felt it was important enough to push it 25%, at least keep trying. And so that's what we ended up with, in the thought that private money would bring at least eight more apartments to bear. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all.
I, I just wanted to clarify that I think some confusion, because it's certainly my confusion, that it, that it appears like there's, there must be two pro formas, because here in front of us is the only, like, documented pro forma I've ever seen in regards to the project, which shows a four-and-a-half million dollar profit between phase one and two. But the S1 says it's a, it's a 1.2 million dollar profit to HLV. So where did that number come from?
That's a very good, specific question. I don't know where that number came from, and I think that's a good question we can get, we can get answered right now. Or maybe beforehand.
Because that's, like, like Matt was saying, that's obviously very different. Like, that four-and-a-half million just got cut in half.
And again, I think, I think Matt's assumption may be valid, that it say, you know, there's another, another set of calculations happened and new numbers came out, they just haven't seen. Or it could have been, it could have been something, you know, transcript or narrative, who knows?
Generally, you're going to be concerned with the comments, is that one of the 70% that happened, number to drop it in there, I'm pretty sure the Assembly did not, so I'm not sure if the projections be separated.
They would not have been able to, because they would have not been in an open setting when they did so, so, yes.
Sorry about it, I'm really, well, a different question for Brett, if that's okay. This, you've been on the HLVAC and familiar with a lot of, or the, familiar with HLV for a while. This is, you, you can confirm that this is the one time that, and the only instance that I know of in which HLV is also a development partner.
Yes.
And so would you see it as the role of the HLVAC then to also be a part of overseeing that development arrangement, and particularly being informed on a monthly basis about ongoing project summaries and financials?
No, thank you, well-formed question, and it raises many other questions. And I would, I would think that that's where the HLVAC would want to be, if HLV is going to continue to be a development partner. You know, we, we haven't had a chance to meet as a body since this has been going on, and I'm, I look forward to some discussions that we might have that would explore those types of oversight issues. And I think it's important that those questions not be forgotten here, and so I look forward to having the body meet again, and look forward to talking about some of those issues.
Just a quick, very quick follow-up, is there a meeting scheduled for January?
There was, I, I don't have the date, I, I haven't gotten notice, but I thought it was somewhere around the 27th or 28th.
Thanks. Nothing on their mission date.
Okay.
But it's normally like third or fourth week.
It's, it's, uh, January 26th.
26th.
Tendatively January 26th.
Oh, tendatively, yeah, but it hasn't been really.
It hasn't been confirmed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, it answers your question. So you mentioned that on the Hightower, you know, or access, whether it occurs or not, there's been no planning relative to that kind of portion of how this project could affect that or integrate that. Are there other, I mean, there's usually a lot of planning goes into something of this nature ahead of time, is there other planning documents that you feel would be prudent to facilitate this development moving forward?
Great, and I can only tell you what I've learned from the planning department of some of these discussions, that there will be, and that's why the conditions were such that as this master, as this land unit development goes forward through the planning department, it was written in one of the conditions that although it's a process that happens through Land Use Committee, where that development process and people can make comments and such, that's supposed to happen through a land use committee, there's a disconnect between delivering to the planning and zoning board and carrying all of those comments to that authoritative body. It's, and I encourage you to go back and read my letter about these conditions, because condition number one was making sure that when this, when they develop this area, all of the land use committee comments and stuff have to accompany the package, and that means up or down, it doesn't matter if there's support or not in support, that that authoritative body needs to know what the community thought. And so that was sort of this gray area where the petitioner didn't have to take negative comments to the authoritative body, and that's what condition one tries to solve. Thank you. Yeah.
Dave, to that question though, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, so what the HLV has used as the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan as their planning document, that was written, I think it dropped in 2006 or 2007, but the research into that started broad in 2002, 2003, so the data for that was sort of, you know, from, from that range. And so we were sort of, I was sort of caught off guard when I heard that that was the planning document. And again, if that is actually the planning document, that does state, as people have noted, that Crow Creek Road was to be the primary access, and essentially, you know, a loop would be created. So that's not something that we're seeing in this proposal. I don't know if that answers your question about what.
It's kind of like a runaround, you know, or something, you know, to use, but, you know, I, I got it close.
Well, I guess the summary, if it's got to go back to the planning department, all of this stuff, and there's going to be a round of public input to that, so that's got to happen again. And, and with the condition, just try and keep a lot of that input local through our, through the LUC process, and then have that fed up to the authoritative body, but that was the, I'm sorry.
I guess if you're going to take a huge tract of land, you know, I guess without any spring development, without much planning, it just seems that kind of concerns.
And I, I mean, that, that particular condition about the, I can't remember again the wording of it, it's not, that condition, developers must submit applications to land use in type limits to the Girdwood Secret Lines, with the new prior seeking official action by designated, this is from the body which was in the, that's both in the S version and the S1 version, that did survive.
It, I, that, that was addressing the concern of the Housing Committee down here about having a community voice and input over what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I see Grace next, oh, sorry. Okay, Grace, please go ahead.
Thank you. I want to, after looking at the S1 version, I'm sadly disappointed with S1, and I would recommend that you vote no on S1. It really misses the mark of what a collaborative development of this transformative size would do for our community. I think that the idea of having one lot out of the existing part one or phase one of 52 lots is, I mean, I, I kind of find it almost insulting, but that's what she's, that's what we have on the table. So my vote is no. It also misses the mark, as we've heard from Mr. Will Banks, with respect to the HLV's vote and what it really meant when they voted, and I was in present at the time when they did vote, to have all of these additional requests and requirements to the vote. I think, again, our community is suffering a lack of misinformation and certainly no information when it comes to seeing a master plan for what the whole project is supposed to look like. I also think we should also note that after almost eight hours of public testimony that was done before the Assembly, multiple residents driving from Girdwood to Anchorage as well as speaking online, I heard 100% of my community saying no to this project. I think this, you know, development, and I'm a developer, I will tell you, it has its pluses and its minuses, but there is no place for a public agency to be involved in disposing public lands for a for-profit development. Thank you.
Grace, can I ask just a quick follow-up, too, please?
Yes.
So one of the things that's going to happen is on Friday, I'm sure there'll be discussions about, you know, amendments to the S version, the S1 version, or probably only those two. So when you say no to what there is now, because one lot isn't enough, is that actually, is that a factor? If it was three lots, would it be a yes, or is it the whole thing doesn't, doesn't, is missing other things, or the project itself is ill-conceived?
I, I think the project is sorely lacking on multiple fronts. So when we talk about a public-private development, if this is what it's being discussed as, is it's public land, so that we should be able to have a transparent and public forum for our community to be at the table, that has sorely missed the mark. So is it three lots? No. As you have heard, Mike, and other people in our community, mother ski towns in this country today are adopting deed restrictions for permanency on guaranteeing that these properties, if they are developed as affordable projects, would stay in the community. And number two, the conversation with respect to public land disposal is in the realm of 80% of the project. So with respect to, and I'll just take to, for instance, to give you an example of Breckenridge. Breckenridge, over the last 20-plus years now, has, has developed over 1,200 lots of public land. And of that 1,200 lots of public land, they have required the development, 80% of each of those developments have been to the public process. So when we're talking about that, you know, their first project that they did in 2000 literally was for approximately 200 units of housing. Of that 200, 80% was deed restricted, 20% was market value, and the other percent was deed restriction, affordable housing. And we've seen model after model of resort communities in this country go with that formula. And why our community is not looking at that, I don't know, but I know that the current deal we have on the table is not that. So to the extent of, would one lot, would five lots be enough? No, in my opinion, we will lose, you know, we have control today, and that is our, our leverage today. As we speak about this adoption of S1, or looking before the vote of January the 10th, we have control today because we have the land. The moment this land transfers title to CY Investments, or Girdwood Life, or LLC, or whatever they're calling the, the other entity that will take possession of it, our leverage has been lost. So then we're going to have to look at some other 200, 400-acre parcel out there or whatever. I, I think that we really have a unique opportunity in this community, and we need to take that unique opportunity and be very loud and clear to our residents. and we need to take that unique opportunity and be very loud and clear to our residents, to our assembly and to the community of Anchorage, that we are not a NIMBY community. We want development, but we want the right development. So any other questions, Mike?
Thanks, Grace. Yeah, just along those lines, I mean, I agree with you about the type of development when it's, when it's using public land, it should primarily be for public benefit, which in resort towns means restrictions around use of housing and cost of housing in most cases, in many cases. Places like Breckenridge also have similar restrictions, although less stringent, on purely private development, something like, I think, I believe Breckenridge currently uses twenty percent of any development over eight units or whatever, something like that, would has to have, I think, twenty percent below market. Is that something you also would support?
I have to say that when you're talking about development like that, Mike, you're talking about communities around the country today are being forward-thinking. Anchorage unfortunately is not that place, but the forward-thinking communities that are taking that opportunity of giving a developer an opportunity both either for private development or for public development, like a nonprofit, they have basically put incentives before the developer to say, if you are a developer of eight units, we will give you a eight-year tax abatement for that. And for that, you will have to put twenty percent of your project into workforce or affordable product. We don't have anything like that here. If we did that, I think that absolutely would support that. I mean, any developer is going to be happy to look at his bottom line, and that is the problem here. Our city of Anchorage does not have any public assistance to encourage multifamily development, and that is a problem. And we, I have, I've shared with many people for the last ten years, when I've come home to talk about development opportunities, to talk about development, let's say philosophies that are occurring, and every community around the country is changing their mindset from the single-family lot, as you know, I think I've recently said, single-family lots in most places on the west coast are being, are being wiped out. The local jurisdictions are saying that is not the highest and best use for our community. That is why I think our Holton Hills development holds a unique opportunity for our community as Girdwood, but for the city of Anchorage, to master plan that development, maybe over a twenty-year plan with opportunities to take, you know, a baby step, make ten acres, and in ten acres, put two hundred units of housing. Certainly not the model that is currently before you, but maybe a new and improved version of what our community can look like in the future. But if we approve this and if we support S one or any version of S one or S or this whole transaction, I think we lose that opportunity. And I think we're so close to having our Girdwood Area Plan, and we have an updated master plan of Crow Creek. I mean, we have a lot of things on your doorstep as Girdwood Board of Supervisors and certainly as the Land Use Group. I, you know, I think we welcome the challenge. I think you've seen an amazing amount of support that has come out against this project because the community is saying, hold on, we want to see it done right. And once you do a development of this size, I mean, we are talking about a hundred years before we see anything different. And so I really urge everybody that's, you know, listening today to come to the work session on Friday, to be there again on the tenth, and to say to, again, to the community, no, we do not need this version of this development at this time.
Thanks, Grace. One quick, what you said about the, the lack of incentives, there's a, I can't remember the exact term now, transit-supported corridors or something, which is a ten-year tax payment on apartments which are built within quarter of a mile or whenever a public transit, public transit lines within Anchorage. And the housing has to be, you know, targeted to a certain income range. Workforce have workforce income range, I don't remember the exact percentages.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that's, so that's, that sort of policy, if that was extended here, I know that wouldn't help necessarily this particular project, but again, would you see that as helpful?
Well, absolutely. That is called a T O D, trans-oriented development. And the T O Ds get both federal money and generally state money. And today, in the world of financing big projects or big developments, we're looking at every opportunity to look at what agencies have bonding abilities and going out and seeing if they can go to the legislature, tweak their opportunities to provide financing opportunities. I mean, as you know, right now, I think Matt Schechter did a very great, I mean, did a wonderful description of what is going on with the financing. I will tell you that most developments today that are not in the ground are being halted of any size because you, the interest rates and the inflation that is affecting the bottom line of every development is a pause. And so I think, you know, Alaska, we've always been a little behind the curve when it comes to getting the, the impact of certain financial things that hit the rest of the country sooner. But I believe that we have, both from Anchorage Economic Development Authority, we have A I D A, we have other, both state and local, opportunities to look at some of their programs and saying, would you go back and look to help build housing in our communities that are not nonprofit? Because today, as you know, Mike, I think you've done enough research, and I think the community understands, I mean, there's only two pools of money for development. You either have the private sector or you have the non-private sector, which would be the nonprofits of our community. And those people go after a very limited amount of money. And unfortunately, our projects that we're talking about here in Girdwood are not nonprofit projects. This is a for-profit development that does not qualify for nonprofit money. So we need to be creative, we need to look at how we can leverage what we've got. If we had control of that land as a community, we could find financing, that would not be a problem. I can sure that Matt Schechter, and there are many people like Matt in his business and such, could find folks that would step up if it was for profit. But we are not in that situation. We are, you know, the suburb of Anchorage, and today we have no incentives in this, in this conversation about development. So I, I find it, you know, is that going to, is that going to move the barometer in the next five years? I'm going to tell you, we've been talking like this for twenty years, and I haven't seen it moved yet. So, I mean, the mere fact that Girdwood has come out against this project because of its transformative nature, because of its lack of support of many things that we're doing here right now in the community, I, I think, you know, we would be a different, we, our community is not against development. I have not heard one person that testified upset about it's, I think it's the type of development that is being delivered to our doorstep. And I think the trans, the lack of the transparency, the lack of the, if I want to call it, I call it bait and switch with respect to a person that we thought, a group that we thought was going to receive the development, and then we now, we have, we've ended up with a completely different couple. I think that we have not had a very collaborative process that I've heard of from both the Holton Hills Housing Advisory Committee. I sit back now here, you know, when I'm being told that we've spent two years having dialogue, I don't think it's been a dialogue, I think it's been a one-way street, and it's been basically my way or the other, or there's no way. And so here we are as a community up against, you know, the abyss. Do we jump and say, forget it? Or do we say, you know, no to development? Well, I guess at this point, I think there's a ledge right there. If we did jump, it's not that far. And to be honest with you, the control has a lot more power in this conversation than losing this control. The moment H L B and we, the assembly sells this land, or basically, and not really selling because to get a ninety-acre parcel with a two million dollar price tag on it as an appraised value is a joke. Everybody in Girdwood knows that if you were to have one acre, let alone a quarter acre, I mean, two doors from my house, a quarter acre, that's twelve thousand five hundred square foot sold for five hundred thousand dollars. How in God's name could ninety acres with a road and infrastructure be only worth two million dollars according to their appraisal? So, I mean, these are just, there are so many things that are just so wrong about this development, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Grace. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, all of you. Truth in advertising, there was.
Stop, you know.
Yes, Seth Ovian, new to the community, three years here, trying to get spun up. And truth in advertising, there was one person in, in favor of this, but when you think about the totality of the last two weeks of testimony that took place back then, almost, almost unanimous, it was against it. Question to you, because there was a raised issue about walkabouts, and I was wondering if Kevin Cross in particular brought up, shouldn't we go walk this site? And I walked it with my daughter just a couple days ago, and it was very educational to me. And the whole, where are these trucks going to be going, and where are our kids going to be riding their bikes and walking to school? And that whole safety issue, I think, becomes very evident when you see that, and when you turn the corner at the Merc and you start doing that. And I would hope that some of the members that are coming down here later this week, I'm not going to be in town, otherwise I would love to, to give somebody a tour, but I would hope that they are reading, seeing out to you and doing that before they get this.
I believe the invite went out, didn't it?
It went out. Yep. Affordability, I think that's.
You ask a hundred people, you get a hundred different answers.
I think if we can stick with something and just understanding that at twenty dollars an hour, somebody who works in this community needs to find someplace for a thousand dollars a month. And, and I don't see with this development, thousand dollar a month, even the A E Ds are being available. And, and we talked about it, and I think other, a lot smarter people than me have talked about vertical. And you said, what would be, what would you agree to? I think this whole thing is rear-looking, it's not forward-thinking. I think that we need to be bold as a community, and, and my answer to, if somebody were to ask me, would say, I would want fifty or a hundred units, you figure it out, of workforce housing in a vertical establishment that creates a nice campus environment for these young kids to come in here, get to know each other with five hundred square foot of, of little studio housing and maybe a thousand for a couple, and, and that they have access to walk pass, access to the bike pass, access to, to the beauty and the wonder of why they came here. And right across the street, Phase Two would be senior independent living facility. And then, once you've done with that, maybe think of, oh, working on single-family developments further up the valley, because that's what I think are going to be our pressing needs, as we have all seen and heard in the testimony. And we have a generational issue with the people that do live in this town, that want to continue to live in this town, but are getting older and cannot keep up a two thousand square foot home. Specifically, I agree with you, Ms. McDermott, that this is a move forward, but I'm against it because I don't think it's enough of a move forward. I think the language is very supportive but not directed. The words choice that are in there kind of sound like we want to support you, but they're not saying X, Y, and Z. Specifically, the H O A is insufficient. A hundred percent unanimous vote in an H O A is, in my opinion, B S, because all you got to do is hold on to one lot, and you, you control the veto power within, or you get one little negative nelly in an H O A and nothing gets done. That's why deed restrictions, I think, as we've seen with Breckenridge, are, are the way. And I'll tell you that my wife, before coming here, Breckenridge was her favorite town in the United States. And she wanted me to go there with too many people in Denver. Page two, line one, single multifamily condos and units is not going to provide workforce housing. Page two, thirty-six and thirty-seven, fifty percent primary residence is not enough. We already have that one where we have streets of the mountain where there's lights out five days a week. So we're not going to get with fifty, fifty percent primary residence enough for workforce housing. And a hundred and fifty and three hundred requirement is mostly unfulfilled by Phase One. A liaison versus a director. They should have just said, we will get a director. We will get a director in the H L B so that you don't have to have a liaison. The liaison, I mean, G B O S should be able to just have somebody to pick up the phone and talk to. I think this is financially backward, it's not making money, it's unimaginative. The bidding issues and the fact that it's, it's not bold in a town that could be bold. And if we don't toe the line now, I think that we're going to be very remorseful and.
Thank you. Any specific questions? So, I knew you mentioned that fifty percent wouldn't, you're probably right, fifty percent wouldn't be, it would be significantly better than we have now, but it still isn't.
Oh, I agree, but if not, but, but if we went vertical, I think we could fill them, and we'd fill them with the, the type of employment that we feel needs in the community, whereas single-family development is, is going to just perpetuate our problem, I think.
Seth, I'd say, replying to that and kind of to my point to Brett, you know, for H L B to have, I think there's supposed to be a five-year work plan and a one-year work plan. And, you know, if we were forward-looking, you know, we'd sort of address the infrastructure first, as it were, and, and, you know, to your point, you know, this national development or exasperates our existing condition where, but I would say, just in my opinion, you know, I don't think that's the, I think that land is going to be very expensive to develop. And I don't think it's conducive to workforce or affordable housing. I think there's other parts of Girdwood Valley that better identify that. Now, when I say that, back to the five-year plan, those spots should be in the five-year work plan, and those projects should have been, should be addressed first prior to, you know, Holton Hills. Whether that happens, you know, that's way beyond.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Kevin. I think that, and I think that going vertical offers the ability to do some kind of grocery stores or yoga studios or, or incubators beneath it, something that is transformative in terms of allowing more businesses to use some of that space and then have people working above it.
Yeah. First.
I want to speak to the, this is not the best place comment for affordable housing. And, you know, South Townsite, it was brought up in multiple people's testimony and also letters that G B O S had received, that like, this is the better location. And what I want to speak to is without multi-multi-multi-millions of dollars of road infrastructure to go all the way down to Ruane. So imagine like where the dirt road runs out on Carriolis, we have to take it all the way through those wetlands and connect it with Ruane where the dump is before we would have a secondary access out. So prior to having a secondary access, we're going to be limited to thirty units. So that is why the Holton Hills lots are so important, is because unless any of that infrastructure is like looked at seriously by the muni, this is our only shot to get housing. So we should be considering, you know what, South Townsite's only good for thirty units until there's any glimpse of hope of getting a secondary access funded. So my personal opinion around the S one, there's a couple, there's a couple things, but the most important thing for me is the one lot is not enough, because if we consider we're only good for thirty units, how many more units can we, can we get in a different location apart from Palmero's land? This is the only developable land that is connected to utilities, so, or will be connected to utilities. So it's just critical that everybody here realizes that we're so limited on where the development occur, could occur. And even if plans move forward on South Townsite were limited because it's a lot of stream setbacks primarily and flooding. So Holton Hills is the only other option. So it's really important that you guys understand that. Personally, before testimony, I had emailed Meg Zell till suggesting the changes in the new S one be three lots of multifamily and three lots of single family, because as I know Ms. Dirks testified from the school, teachers want homes too. They don't just want five hundred square foot apartments. And I think that we should be considerate of that and actually setting land aside to help with people that we know we need in, need or will need in the community coming in the future. Additionally, Girdwood Inc. had suggested ten lots, and I think that that was just a to point out that the one lot was not enough, and. And, um, if this is going to go forward, we have to have more than one. And, uh, my personal opinion is if I were to vote on the S1, I would don't know. Because one lot that holds eight units is simply not enough.
The last couple of questions, I, I keep hearing thirty, where does that actually come from? That thirty unit limit before there's the second access?
Uh, I actually heard it from Adam Tremblay and the, it's in code. That it's required to have secondary access if you have more than one units.
I still can't find it in code for that, my, my problem. Someone, someone will know the answer to that question.
And so I also talked to the traffic director about two years ago. And I believe he told me thirty-three units is all that we would be allowed back there in addition to a childcare facility and a recreational facility.
Right. And then my other question was, um, when you said, I don't know the lots is the right way to define it. I think it's probably housing units is a better way to define it in terms of, you know, what, what should be done at below market. So, um, you said three lots of multifamily plus three lots of single family. Did you mean single family or duplex or what did you mean by that?
Well, I mean, I provided a map to each one of you guys of which lots I was suggesting. And it was in, in the Girdwood Inc., uh, request, it was actually seven lots of multifamily, or sorry, seven lots of single family, three of multifamily. And it doesn't really matter to me exactly which lots they are, but I think it is important to start identifying which ones we may want or which ones make most sense, especially if we're allowed to change the zoning in the planned unit development. So the fact is that we don't know how many units will be built, right? Because we, there's not housing, it's just lots. So I can only go with what we're being put in front of us, which is lots.
What I meant is, um, when you said three lots of multifamily, I mean, are you thinking each of those would be at least eight units or eight units or six units or twelve units or?
I mean, I would hope that we would be able to increase the density, uh, whenever might be possible. And to give a really quick example of the density issue in general, Aliaska's, um, employee housing is, let's say, on less than an acre. Maybe three quarters of an acre to an acre. That, that building is going to have seventy-one to eighty-one units inside of it. So seventy-one to eighty-one units inside of one acre. All Holton Hill's Phase One is fifteen acres and has about eighty units. So that really is a good comparison of where we're falling short in the density discussion and how much land is being utilized to get these housing units.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Crystal, I know that you need to look into development in this and Girdwood Land Trust at the point five. And I see in this version, um, they're talking about, um, transfer nonprofit entity, um, handing this land over to the, to them. And they put a five-year limit on it? Is that even feasible in a five-year?
I think ten would be more realistic. Uh, but I actually have a question about if it even acknowledges that we exist. It kind of seems like it's like an entity to be created. And then if and when it's created in five years of the plat, then it could go to them. So I don't see GCLT being included at all and, and even being a possibility. Unless the language has changed.
Then do you see this language prohibiting them though? I mean, you know, does this allow some wiggle room in case Girdwood Land Trust can step in and fill this role? Is there, you know, do you see an issue with stating who this should be right now?
Uh, I would prefer for it to be open-ended so that it could be GCLT, but it could be also be other entities. Because I don't want to shortchange the Girdwood community and say, we want to take this on when it's a huge task to take on. So I want all nonprofit entities to be eligible and have the opportunity. We had submitted language that didn't get included in the S1, um, which was HLB will retain ownership of ten lots identified in attachment A for the development of a minimum of thirty-five affordable multifamily dwellings for rent. A select number of units will be eligible to participate in a shared equity model, allowing renters to graduate into homeownership if meeting eligible criteria. These properties will work our full-time residency of occupants and no short-term rental. HLB commits to working with the Girdwood community through mutually agreed upon management body on the development of these lots. Future HLB development plans disposing of Girdwood Land Trust must be reviewed and approved by Girdwood Land Use Committee and Girdwood Board of Supervision. Actually, this got, and I might not be looking at the most recent version of this. But the, my point is, is that I want it to list management body because that is what the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan says. It says management body. So like, that's the thing that's important that gets inserted. Because management body could include Cook Inlet, it could include Girdwood Community Land Trust, it could ensure, it could include Neighbor Works. It can include a multitude of partners that we could utilize to solve our issues. So I, the way that it's written right now looks like it's only for a housing trust or nonprofit entity that it's yet to be created. That's how it reads to me.
Sorry, just for clarification, when you said, we said that the thing of thirty-five, that was Girdwood Community Land Trust?
No, that was Girdwood.
Thanks.
This was prior to seeing the new S1.
So remember that one. Thank you, sorry.
Uh, no, I, I saw your hand up. Did you, or Crystal, for Crystal, is this sort of additional comment?
Additional comment.
Okay. Uh, so, um, through the chair, I just wanted to kind of note the time and the total number of people that we have online and also in the room. And I'm just curious if you'd be willing, if I could just get kind of a straw poll idea if we're able to do that of whether or not we're for or against the S1 in its current. I just, I just find that that piece of information would really help me for Friday if the community is leaning like towards this thing and let's, let's tweak one or two things on it. Or are we generally leaning against it? Would be super helpful for, for me trying to represent the community. Do you think that, is there a way that we might be able to?
We could do that. I'd like to get through a few more comments first.
Okay, okay. But we could see time for that.
Yeah, hopefully. Sorry, I saw some questions. Was it specifically, just a clarification from Crystal?
Uh, yes, uh, for Crystal, so did I, I get that right? That you were at, that maybe asking for ten lots that could then be sold to an individual? And my question is, if it's under this, um, say, deep restriction of, say, below market rate? My question is, since we're a property tax-only community, what happens when, you know, Crow Creek needs plowing money and the rest of it? Are those, when the public land is held tax-free in a rent-to-own and then you sell it to that private party? What's the disposition of the public land? It seems like that would kind of end any benefit towards below-market rate housing availability. It doesn't, I'm having a hard time understanding.
So you're saying because, like, let's say a nonprofit owned a building, there wouldn't be, um, property tax from it, right?
Correct.
And so, I mean, in the way that this plan is, is, uh, being projected to run, there's, you know, let's say we did get twenty percent of the lots, that's eighty percent market rate to help. And they're going to be very expensive homes. And, and the, the, so that the, the affordable housing component would be the public benefit side.
I guess my question was, when you mentioned that, like, one of the single-family homes in a, like, rent-to-own scenario? And then they own the land, you've sold what was done as a public benefit to get an individual private party into a below-market rate lot? And then you sell that to that private individual? Are you envisioning it's still below market rate so that they don't pay property taxes?
So that, that, the way that you're describing is only one way that that could potentially happen. And what would happen normally with the community land trust is the community land trust would maintain ownership of the land.
That makes more sense.
And, and, and then the investor of the building would own the building. And if it, it's a for-profit person, they would be taxed on it and it would be taxable.
Right. Well, thanks for the clarification.
There are, in, in northern Michigan, they should talk with, and that's the way it works, is, uh, the association owns the land and they pay property tax on it. And the people buy the right to build above the grass. And they pay personal property tax on their, their cabins, so to speak. But the ownership backside.
Please next.
Yes. Apologies for not being able to get here on time. But I mean, I feel a bit of, the, the origin of this meeting was the stemming from a comment I'd made, you know, at whatever land use in GBOS around the area master plan. And, and, um, I think, well, contributors, I should say, not origin. Uh, and I, I think, um, I think there's been a lot of points here about this should be forward-looking, this should be collaborative, this should be all the things, right? And everything this should be sort of is like, this should be something that started with a five-year work plan that fed straight into an area master plan, which was, is a reinvigoration of the two thousand and six plan. That's where the impact studies would be done and updated from two thousand and two data to two thousand and twenty-two data. And, you know, I, I did, and I shared with some people in the room. I, the next morning, I did an assessment of that two thousand and six plan for the big gaps. You know, some of the big ones that came out were the, assumed that Crow Creek Road would be paved and upgraded in two thousand and eight, um, on the DOT's dollar. Clearly, that wasn't done. I thought another really interesting thing, almost laughable, it assumes we're going to have a trolley here. Sounds exciting. We're going to have a trolley and it's going to go from the highway to everywhere in town. And so tourists won't use our roads because they'll go on the trolley. Sounds like, oh, great, never going to happen. So all the traffic studies presume a trolley, not using Aliaska Highway for everybody who comes to visit Girdwood and lives in Girdwood. That felt really substantial to me. Otherwise, there, there weren't like huge glaring philosophical things that were like, oh, this plan is clearly wrong. But like, I think it's the unknown unknowns that come and bite you later. And, and that's what a proper impact assessment plan does. And I think, you know, it was pointed out that there, there was, you know, it, there was the choice not to do a site-specific study, even though it's required, and then the choice to use this two thousand and six plan. So they're choosing to use the two thousand and six plan, but then they're not complying wholly with it, whether that be Crow Creek Road. And then my big concern, when I read the plan, what that plan did was it determined zoning for that area. And then that zoning, even though the Girdwood Area Plan, the last update was nineteen ninety-five, the two thousand and six Crow Creek Master Plan updated the area plan with zoning. And so that, to me, specifies the process by which we change zoning for a reason. We have an area master plan, we have a Girdwood Area Plan. Enter big-dollar CY Investment Happy Lady, uh, who, sorry, I shouldn't make fun of it. Anyways, enter CY Investments in this development agreement. Oh, no, we're going to just use this PUD, bypass Girdwood. We're going to rezone the school, we're going to rezone other things in this area. And we're going to bypass the updating of the area master plan, the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan and the Girdwood Area Plan and use this thing that doesn't, the, the PUD requires a public hearing, but nothing about that public hearing is binding. It's just they have to hear Girdwood. And, I mean, gosh, we've been talking now for how long? What's happened? You know, one person, one body listened to us and tried to put something in, and then we were still, you know, disregarded. So I sit here and I have really big concerns. Now, I think it's also interesting, in the, um, RFP response and in the development agreement, CY Investments commits to do an area master plan update. And I asked Suzanne LaFrance and Randy, uh, hello, why? And then they said, well, sorry, the determination was made after that. Well, I'm sorry. They're very smart people. They could have asked before two binding agreements were entered into, promising something, to then come up with this interpretation, oh, actually, we were just kidding about that because we looked at it closer and they laid a sewer line, a backup water line in two thousand and eleven, which, which affected that area, effectuated that area master plan indefinitely. And so Ryan Yell himself said that development plans are updated every ten to twenty years as a matter of practice. Grace indicates it's every five to ten years. Let's just say the common ground there is ten. So industry standard is to update development plans every ten years. Maybe we could say ten to twenty. This is seventeen. So we have this huge investment or huge development, which is greater than any, you know, typical for HLB, which was not in a work plan, which was not, you know, begun there, is updated. The work plan is a one sentence in the ordinance. And this ordinance updates the work plan because we acknowledge the law requires it, presto, change, oh, done. And then they commit two times to update the area master plan, which is the vehicle for impact assessment and community co-collaboration. It, it has like seventeen requirements that achieves everything we're asking for. And, and it was committed to two times to do it. And then they're saying, oh, but then we got this determination that the water line, you know, canceled that. And I'm like, come on, kids. That's not, um, that's not a good excuse. And then, and then we have demonstrated, um, already failures to adhere to that plan. And we see clearly a plan to bypass it again, using the PUD instead of the zoning process of area plan, area master plan to area plan. What else will they bypass in that, in that process? And, and so those things are super concerning to me. And I think, you know, when taken all of that through the lens of the development agreement, which states that any overruns will be borne by the owner, which is municipality of Anchorage and its heritage land bank. Our money as taxpayers will bear all overruns. So the risk of using an old development plan is borne entirely by the municipality of Anchorage and our tax money. And I submit that that is fiduciarily irresponsible to take on that kind of risk. In addition to the four elements in eight point four, which are nowhere indicated in any pro forma that they've put out, that will be wholly borne. And then, you know, we've seen Matt's looked at the financials of the HLB. There isn't thirty million dollars in some account for them to fund all these unforeseen things. So now you have this development that falls on its face because we've disposed of this land, but there's no money anywhere to solve all the problems that are created. So either Girdwood is left with all these problems and they're like, well, sorry, we didn't see that coming because we didn't follow the plan. Or, or the whole development can't go through and the, and the promised benefits of it are never realized. But like, it's just irresponsible. And, and so, you know, independent of, of being a Girdwood resident who loves this community and wants that land developed in collaboration with Girdwood, because I think there's, I think we hear from everybody, there's so much potential there. And we want to help design its highest use in alignment with our community vision. The way that this development is steamrolling over all of the process that ensures our collaboration and our voices are heard and that we have a seat at the table with a, a trajectory to continue that. And, you know, material bypassing. I mean, they're stating they have approval that they don't have. I mean, it says, we have the approval of HLBLC. HLBSA is saying, no, you don't. You know, and, and, and so this, the, I'll just call it straight dishonesty and failure to, to acknowledge our role in, in, in public land. And, you know, public land, public process, public good, um, none of the above in, in this project. So, so I'm, you know, frankly, vehemently opposed, not just opposed. And, and no S1 version could actually come through. I mean, to me, an S1 version is the assembly saying, okay, we acknowledge everything was passed, but let us just hear you now and put it in. It's still, it still bypasses everything that our codes and standards offer so that we're not in the situation we're in. And so I just think, and I think, you know, the two thousand and six plan didn't have huge glaring things other than Crow Creek Road and the trolley. Love the trolley. But the unknown unknowns. And I think, you know, some of the things that, that we've talked about that have changed, um, you know, and then interestingly, that plan says twenty-five percent affordable, but not in a binding way. Um, and similarly, the S1, sorry, I see your hand. Similarly, the S1, uh, is all should language and no shalls. And, um, I worked in industry, should is like, yeah, shall is like, um, and so there's nothing binding in there. And, and so it's just like, it's just, to me, insulting because it presumes that we're not smart and we can't. It's just more empty.
Shannon's been waiting online and a couple there's dropped off.
Shannon, I think Jerry had his hand up as well at some point.
I think Jerry was before me.
Yeah, but he's got his hand down now, so unless you're, I'll let you go first, Shannon.
All right, well, um, I was just wondering, got so much information to try to process, of course, and so many really intelligent people in our valley, which I really respect. What is it that you're needing for the next meeting, though? I'm afraid that the time's going to run out and we won't have a solid response. Are, are we going to be going through each of these points and saying yes or no? Or is it a solid just yes or no from the community? What is it that is the next step for you to take to the work session?
I can speak as one person, but what I, what I was looking for is, uh, is the sort of feedback we've got so far. Uh, because I think this, this illustrates a lot of the questions and, um, information that we need to get out for the work session.
Well, and I was hoping, you know, in kind of some of the.
Sorry, I was starting, Shannon.
No, but, but like, in terms of, you know, coming to land use in GBS was the idea was to get a resolution from GBOS prior to the work session, prior to the vote, saying.
I think you're right about prior to the vote.
Yeah, prior to the vote, but this is the last meeting, prior to.
It's not.
Oh, so there is another meeting where we.
We'll be here Monday, yes.
Okay. The community can't vote, okay. So we're still on track to, to pursue a resolution from GBOS opposing the project.
Yeah. Do you have a, do you have another point, Shannon?
Well, no, that's what I was asking based on, that was something that I think it was Kevin said in the very beginning, we want to make sure that we do have something solid from the community to present. We want to make sure that we do have something solid from the community to present. I think if we say a solid no, I fear, I don't know, I don't, will they listen to us? You know, can we point out some good things in here? Um, just to say that we're not a total, you know, even though maybe it's a no, I don't know. I just want to be prepared with something for them.
I think we're gonna have at least a summary of the, um, of the discussion points that came up today. We'll have that document, uh, which we've we've published and make sure the, um, the assembly has before Friday. And of course, we can bring up individual items as we go. I'm gonna ask Jerry, and then unless that was in response to or Shannon, sir.
Um, it was kind of in response to Shannon.
Then we'll go to Jerry.
Right. So just real quickly, Shannon, and I think I've said it before, I am hoping to get a general sense. I understand the fear about like hard no or hard yes, but I would really personally like to know kind of which way the community is leaning. One, if it's just a no and, or sorry, I'd like a straight up yes, no, even though that doesn't mean we're gonna present to you somebody with that. But I would like to be to say the community is not present, does not support this as is. Doesn't mean there are good points in it, doesn't mean we can't work with it, but I would personally like to know whether or not the community supports as is. And that's just, anyway, I wanted to get into that.
Yeah, but is there a timeline to the meeting tonight?
We have a normal ending of six, but we don't, I believe, have a hard of six o'clock. Go a bit beyond that.
Do we need to, you know, pass a motion and go beyond that, or should we just?
I think we do. No.
Just curious.
I think we need to go to ten, you do, ten o'clock.
We go to ten. Okay, let's not do that.
So let's move on to Jerry.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'll follow up with what other people have said, you know. I don't know what person said it, but the S one version, there's a lot of non-binding things in that S one version that, you know, we have found from past that, you know, when you talk to the planning and zoning like Ryan Yelp, they just look at whether you're following the legal terms of the document, and that doesn't mean you have to do anything. And so as an example, it says fifty percent of the owners or the properties will be owner occupied, will be prioritized. Well, that doesn't mean anything. So when you don't have strict, you know, la- uh, language in the document that requires things to happen, none of it will happen. We found that with the development down by Gunny Sack and other things. Um, the, but the real question I have, and it's kind of toward you, Mike, is, um, politically, where where leverage do we really have? Like Grace talked and says, well, we have leverage because we have the property. Well, we don't have the property. HLB has a property. The city, municipality of Anchorage owns the property. And so, you know, no development doesn't help our community. There's a lot of really good ideas for development, but what politically, how does this go forward? I mean, if we as a community just continue, I mean, one of the things I see happening probably will be in the long run that the assembly will approve it somehow with, and then there'll be a lawsuit. But so I think this is gonna go on for a long time. But politically right now, where is this, what is the assembly looking like? I keep hearing Meg is working on the S one version and amendments to it. So I assume that Connie has got people on the assembly to vote for this. I, you know, lining people up because she's pretty politically savvy. Um, where we, what kind of leverage do we really have? That's my question.
What leverage do we really have is the question. Um, well, I mean, we ultimately, the the assembly make the decision, we don't. So we have the, you know, we have the leverage of a of a body that's represented. As GBOS, we have a leverage of a body that's selected to represent the community. Um, but we don't have a vote. Um, we have, I mean, the reality is that the assembly has stated that the, um, you know, one of their priorities for this year and for several years is to make it easier to develop more housing in, uh, in the municipality. Um, so the reality is that I think that, you know, the body as a whole leans towards a yes on probably the first version. Um, and it's it's only the amount of noise we've made and the points we've, the points we've made that's, uh, that's sort of changed it. And now they're considering what benefit there is to the community, not just, uh, not just what HLB says. So there's been movement. I don't, I, I have an opinion on what I think if I was gonna vote count, what I think the different outcomes would be. It really just depends, it all does depend on what, um, what happens when they, when they discuss which is which of the ordinances they decide to move of the three that are in front of them. Um, and what amendments happen and what the final vote is on the thing that emerges from that process. And I don't know what that will be. I would be a very rich man if I could predict the future. Uh, with that certainty. I mean, I think the, it's it's very clear that the body, I think that I would say that if if there was a miscalculation by the administration, by Adam, I think if there was a miscalculation that the assembly would say yes to whatever was proposed because it would build housing. And that that clearly is not the situation, is not what actually happened. Um, but I think part of the reason there was no movement at all from HLB until the very end was a misunderstanding of, uh, of the position of the assembly as a whole. So I don't, you know, I'm not sure. I would not put money on a definite no from the assembly, and I wouldn't put money on a, um, on a yes to anything either. I just simply don't know how it's gonna go. I think we've made a good argument. Um, and there'll be further amendments and further changes, I'm sure, to this S one, which I think is the one that will be moved. Um, but I don't know what the outcome will be.
Yeah, so.
Can I just sort of, one last point. I do agree, though, if we look, if we're looking beyond this specific development to what we need as a community in the longer term, I think most of what's been described today, um, by everyone else is what we need. Um, it would be ideal if this project wasn't going ahead now and was going ahead in one to two years when, uh, we had an area plan in place, which will have a lot of the policies in it that we've been, you know, other people have been discussing tonight. So if we were in, if we were further down the road and we had more stuff in place, we had a, we had an updated area plan. We had some other policies which we were starting, then we'd be in a much better place to, uh, progress, but we're not there. That was a glimmer way of not answering your question, Jerry.
Yeah, um, I have one more comment, and that comment is to Jen, and I don't think you need to have a poll. I think I can give you the answer. Ninety-five to ninety-nine percent to ninety-nine point seven nine percent of the people in Girdwood are against this S one version. I don't know of anybody that's for this S one version. That I, there's a lot of people like myself that say, if you don't have any development, it doesn't help. So we have to work towards some development. But this version here, I don't know that there's anybody that thinks this is good for Girdwood. That's my comment.
Can you follow up on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, Jerry, thank you for your comments. I wanted to follow up on one thing, which I'm not sure really speaks to your leverage question, but might still answer some aspects. And talking with people in this community, uh, there's been an awful lot that has just come up in the last week. I mean, Matt has found things just in the last week. Kelly is developing her arguments that even even still now, I mean, most of what you found, you found right way, but figuring out the ways and what's gonna resonate the most. I think in there's another way to answer the question. It's not necessarily about leverage, but in what's gonna resonate for the assembly. And I think if we can show, uh, that first of all, that this is a very dubious deal for the city. Second of all, the processes have not been followed correctly. And thirdly, as you say, uh, I I don't think there's gonna be end of it. I would really hope that we can get the assembly to listen to some of these concerns upfront rather than having to talk about this lawsuit situation, having been through the state districting thing, it's a hot mess. So I really want to shout out to everybody in the community who's been working on this and encourage everybody to reach, continue reaching out because the, what has happened is we have been having to do the forensic accounting, the policy research, the code research, officials coming through minutes, trying to figure out what budgets haven't, haven't been passed, what we can legally do, Brett and Ron, we're having to do that on the fly. This has been a citizen initiative, and that's where I think our real leverage as such actually.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we've been making, we've been making a strong case for what's wrong with the, what's wrong with this proposal.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Dave Hyman. I apologize. It's been forty-five years since I've last come to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. But, uh, anyway, yeah, so I kind of got in late, late involved, late in looking at this, uh, proposal. But, uh, I think, uh, echoed what other people say is that really, if you tell the community is a no on this S one version, we've heard from financial expertise that it's really a bad deal. It's not just a bad deal for us, the whole commu- city of Anchorage. Um, municipality is a bad deal. I mean, because we're doing stuff, not just for her, but but for the people, our guests and our friends, brothers and sisters. We come to enjoy the valley and we're looking to develop the valley in a way, as we would all like, kind of like smear resort type development. Be, uh, similar, maybe learn some lessons from other areas. But the whole thing that bugs me, and I've, I've been on a few commissions for the municipality, you know, I've been, I was the chair of the hazardous materials advisory commission when we came up with the landfill siding way back when, uh, and hazardous waste small quantity collection center. We had to go to every community council and entire Anchorage and have public meetings and go through work groups and do planning that, you know, that we've come to expect would occur in the city of Anchorage. I was also recently the chair of the natural resources watershed commission, which has not been renewed under this administration. So we're we're kind of going away right now. But similarly, we try, I understand your position as an advisory commission on uh, on the Heritage Land Bank Advisory Commission, right? I mean, that's, you guys have already stated, you stated today that that this current S one does not meet the minimum best interest of the community, the city of citizens of Anchorage. Because they left out key language and that was purposely left out. I have to imagine they had the language, but they chose to edit it so that it doesn't include some of the the basic things we need out of this type of a development. It perturbs me that we're here at the same time, I'm excited and impressed with the community of Girdwood and, you know, and how everyone has come to the fore and done the research, tried to offer positive comments. We do want development. We want good development. Remember, Girdwood was incorporated into the municipality of Anchorage in nineteen seventy-five. Right? With the, when, uh, when we, uh, the borough joined Anchorage, Girdwood did not vote to join Anchorage. But because it was a community by vote, uh, we were absorbed. So, um, and that can be a very good thing. But to see this public process, this is just, this process is backwards. There was no involvement. There was no meaningful engagement. Uh, we have, uh, you know, basically a proposal team that no longer exists. I mean, so you had, uh, e- even even with the process that occurred, there's been so many, uh, workarounds, runarounds, the developer is kind of notorious, not a good, great developer. Uh, you know, they've got bad subdivisions elsewhere, but that, you know, everyone has one bad project, so maybe we can't hold it against them. I'm curious of why we're giving up school property when the purpose of school property is to for future use for the community. These are, going back to the city of Girdwood, these were core lands, you know, these are, these are some of the closest core lands to our current town center. Um, so it's just, it's really a land grab. It's really just a straight giveaway at low, below market cost to a developer with minimal obligations to the community, no connection, real connection to the community. Or, and and if you look at the draft subdivision plan, it's a joke from just, you know, a northern climate ski area community layout. So they haven't really even thought about that. Um, so I I just, you know, I obviously I'm a hard no on this version. Uh, we do want to see development. We want to see things that work for all of Girdwood and the municipality of Anchorage. But if you're gonna sell for two point one million, I'll buy it, you know, means, I I really, I could buy it today. I'd get a couple of friends together. We'd buy that land and work on, and work with the community to do something. That's, so there's really, it's really, uh, just not a good idea. We also, you know, we heard from Matt on the the counting, and it just doesn't make any sense. So financially. So, I mean, that's, as, um, I'll throw in there, my dad surveyed Chair One back in the late fifties. I've been coming here since I was a little kid, learned to ski here, first bought my land right out of college because I knew I wanted to be in Girdwood, although I'm living in Anchorage half back and forth, back and forth. Uh, so, yeah, I have a connection to this community, and this this issue really brought out my interest, and I hope to participate and work on solutions. But this S one, or this current proposals, it's a joke. It's a slap in the face. It doesn't meet any of our community objectives. Uh, and we were not consulted. We were not involved in the process. And Anchorage, when the borough joined Anchorage, that was a big thing of bringing in, uh, the community process of community councils, in this case, board of supervisors. So it it was, uh, and that was Jack Rodrick, the borough mayor, that encouraged all those, uh, kind of public input uh, to to the process. So anyway, I just thank you, everybody. I just wanted to get my piece in, and you guys know what to know. I mean, I mean, there's no saving. This is putting lipstick on a pig. Anything we do with this thing is just life. It's gussing it up, and we're, and the key thing is when we give up that land to the developer, that you have no leverage. There will be no leverage. The shalls, there's no shalls. It's a should. There is no leverage. We we lose it.
Thank you. Um, I did see an online name who's now sitting in the audience, did you?
I just want to say, you know, whereas means nothing. It means, I reread the whole document, replace whereas with the words. It would be nice if the developer does not have to, because that's really what it means. And if you read all the whereas, everything we want is in the developer, doesn't have to, even though it's nice. And when you give the meat of what they have to do, it's substantially nothing. And I would think one of our asks can be, give her the word whereas and make it a binding connect to some of the things we ask for. Because everything we ask for is not binding. It's just whereas.
Look, I I got a comment on that. So that's actually a really good question for, um, or a good clarification I hope we get out of the work session. Because, um, what I've been, what I've heard, what I've been told is that the, you know, in the way that, in the way that we want plans, we want things like that to be followed, the the language in the ordinance um, has the same kind of effect to be overrides what a plan would do. So if there's stuff in the ordinance which, you know, has a a goal or requirement or an intent, then that acts in the same way as a plan document for that same thing. So while I agree with you, it's nowhere near as good as having something in the, it's having an absolute hard requirement. It is nothing. That's what I've been told. I'd like to hear that on the record on Friday for clarification, what it really is.
Just on that topic, though, the assembly's interpretation of what language means in an ordinance is not, um, particularly meaningful because it's really planning that will interpret that. So the assembly can think that they have all the importance in the world, but if planning doesn't view it that way, their opinion doesn't matter once it's passed, because it'll be planning that interprets it. So we should get that clarification from planning, not from the assembly.
Well, it's legislative in terms, the assembly has, you know, say so, state that stuff on the record, et cetera. That's where it comes from. And even if planning refused to do it, as we've seen in the past, there's a. Say, board of adjustment. Not equalization, I think it's a board, I think it's a board of adjustment, maybe it's equalization. I think the board of adjustment, which can review planning decisions, and they do go back to legislative. And we saw that, we saw that in a, you know, um, in the case of Gunny Sack.
Okay.
Now, as it happens, there wasn't anything to support. We wanted the interpretation to be, but it would be different here. But I think that's a, that's a good point for clarification. And, you know, I, it may well be, it means nothing. Um, but I'd like to hear that from the assembly and open the assembly's attention. Sorry, Jen.
But I, I would just like to speak that actually, and just respectfully disagree, her chair. Uh, I think the, um, RFP specifically used the word affordable housing, and we specifically got in something where the cheapest thing, the market value for the cheapest, sorry, for the, not cheap, for the lowest level condo is gonna be built, uh, based on current market values around eight hundred thousand. So I think that that word clearly meant nothing, and the intent meant nothing. Because I don't, I don't know anybody in the Anchorage borough or anywhere else, how entry level at eight hundred thousand is affordable housing. Uh, and I've, I have been frustrated with, you know, the RFP response going to a group three, but it doesn't matter if it's a group one. To to Kelly's points over and over, Kelly's long list of points, intent has been nothing. The intent of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan has been overlooked completely. The original, we we still have the original, uh, people who who came up with that, not one of them says that this meets their intent. So, uh, I would, I would just like to respectfully disagree, even when the words clearly should mean something, like affordable housing should mean something. They did not. So I I would like to see something much more cheap. That's, this is, sorry.
I don't know if that's a, I'm not sure that's a disagreement, because I think we said the same thing. We'd much rather see something that's actually a hard requirement. It's just that it isn't true, that it isn't true to say that, uh, it, well, I don't know if it's true. I'd like an answer as to. true, I'd like an answer as to whether it's true or whereas means nothing.
You know, the things that, if you think about the, the lack of, for what we're considering happening, the lack of strategic planning that would be taken for something of this magnitude where there is so little developable land in the valley, that all we're basically doing is saying, all right, we've got a thirty mile screwdriver and we're going to tell you what to do, because we've already got this thing here and we're going to make this work. And shut up and we're going to just turn the screwdriver from fifty miles. And, I mean, when you look at six pages, this thing ought to reference a plan that is three hundred pages in, in its scope of how we are going to get our kids to school and have walking trails and the idea to ride path working and all of the things that have been brought up.
And especially with a huge.
Did you want to say, just that whole thing?
Oh, no, just to build on the point though, especially with a huge public investment that they're not even disclosing, that doesn't meet the established public benefit, it's just intent is nowhere realized in this plan.
Thank you. I don't see any more comments, I'm sorry. I just, I'm not looking at it.
This is, I think, you know, another good discussion, but this is how, is that, what this amounts to regardless of the S one, is this is a subsidized development for a private developer. And so that's just my personal comment and then, and I wonder if we're not at the point now, Mike, where we could start, you know, whether it's a straw poll or where we start summarizing points that we could, you know, provide for the Assembly prior to their work session, you know, I've got a, I don't know, ten bullet points that I've picked up from this discussion. And that, you know, whether we can, if this is the venue, if we're able to kind of come to something that, you know, we can hit.
Yeah, my, my sense is we have, we have a recording of it, we have noted that we've taken, I think this can be summarized outside of the meeting, I don't think it requires a discussion. I think we're just simply replicating what's been said, which I think is a, is a perfectly reasonable thing to do. But we're not producing a, we're not producing a document, it's just noted purposes of making sure some of these issues get addressed on Friday. So, I mean, sorry, Mr. Go. Sorry, yeah, please, on the show.
Okay, I don't come in, I'm in many parts, but, which I think are really tough, but my concern was in this S version, it talks about secondary access, it's now something that the community will fund and that, and I wanted to bring up that that's not normal. Normally, secondary access is applying responsibility and it's required for, you know, evacuation of communities and subdivisions. So I just wanted to make sure if we recognize that suddenly making secondary access something that's just based on funding availability is viewed and not normal for any. And then just a reminder that all of the big trucks that go past this pool that are going to go out onto pass the town site is also going to be coming at the opposite spot of all the power trucks that are going to be sent. So I, I don't think there's a good solution to this.
Okay, I think you want to make a proposal about the straw poll?
Well, actually, no, not if, if the, if the members of the GBOS and LUC that are here and online are comfortable with, okay, we've heard enough generally that we can all agree, I just don't want to be at that table saying that the community is against this and some say, wow, we don't really know that for sure we didn't. You know, I get even here that we just, we do have a limited number of people. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable saying, we don't need to bother with the poll, I kind of do agree with Jerry, I haven't heard anything, but if, but I, I just want to make sure we're on the same page when we're behind the table talking to the Assembly, that the community does not agree with this S.
Jennifer, if somebody cared and was in support of it, they'd be here. I think that's, that's important reality.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Right.
If somebody cared and wanted to see houses that were ten feet, twenty feet, looking into each other's bathrooms, they would be here and say something.
Would it make more sense to do a quick poll, just so you can tell me, we polled the members and it came out with ninety-eighty percent against.
Or a hundred percent.
A hundred percent against.
Between online and here, we've had what, twenty-six to twenty-eight people and we haven't heard any.
Right.
I mean, it would be an official, here's what we did.
With this two point, whatever million it is, if you look at everybody that voted normally in Gerwood, eight hundred people, we all put in three thousand bucks, we could actually trump the two you want to vote on. It's fact of the business, other than the elevation.
There's land, it is worth noting, there's land for sale in portage, which is not road accessed and not accessible all year long for the same price as this land.
And it's in portage.
And it's in portage.
And there's, but there's, not only are they not, you can't even get there much of the year for the same price.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
During this poll.
Did you have your hand up, Katie?
Um, I did briefly, but then someone else covered my point, so thank you, Ed and Jerry.
I got a quick comment.
Yeah, sure.
So, on this note, in the assembly, last month, we all went to talk, you know, to the Assembly and tell them that we thought about it, with everybody, but I think I said one person didn't agree with this. My, I, I kind of felt like, Ben, there's no way the Assembly is going to, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Lautal making these comments on here, but there's, this is way more complex than a couple of people on the Assembly in a room trying to, to make this work out. I mean, you know, they need input and, you know, I do worry about the Assembly about that vote and when it's going to come. But, you know, postponing it, pushing off for, you know, not squashing it, but just, we need time and I think we need to let the Assembly do that. Because it's way too complex, you know, she, she tried her best, but, you know, you know, people in this room spent hours, hundreds of hours on, you know, trying to find out how to make this work and, and that input needs to go into this document. So I, I never thought that they'd be able to on the fly change this and make a vote on it, you know, or should at all, regardless of, they shouldn't even, H L B shouldn't even be in this, this venture, I don't think, but that's, I guess that's part of it too. But, so, I don't know, I just, you know, the Assembly, it just worries me, the Assembly is, is going to come up sooner than it should and that vote's going to be on the table and we're going to be in lawsuits or whatever it takes up to that. So I don't know how to postpone it, but I, I think, you know.
I think they're going to vote on it.
Well, and part of us want them to, if we want to know, you know, part of the strategy is that Jamie Alex is a no. And if they vote on the tenth, she has to be there around for the vote because she wants to vote no. And so, you know, Randy's counsel is we want Jamie because her replacement's going to be a yes. And so that is the reason that we would want a sooner vote, because it's actually in our favor and that's the counsel given by our representative for the best chance we have to, you know, get a no, if that's what we want. I think if we do ask for postponement, we need to be really specific. So we want postponement, pending completion, an update of the two thousand and six Crow Creek to make sure that whatever development's done is in alignment with that and completion of the Gerwood Area Plan. Like, I think, I think if we ask for postponement, it has to have teeth and it has to point to process and documents that are well established. And anything less than that is just going to be more time placating and not following the frigging law. And like, so, so that would be just my, my comment to, to postponement.
No, and I, I'm not, I'm not proposing that or, you know, I don't know what the strategy should be, but I, I do worry about whether, you know, because we really haven't had any time, you know, from when all this came about, the development agreement and you're able to meet with H L B H C and we're actually starting to get some input from H L B.
But after the fact, it was planned process and just like, you know, it's just, we should all be.
So one aside, please.
And then, you know, similar to this, you know, this was drafted just over the last couple of weeks and so, you know, I, I don't know what strategy is, but.
One follow, can I? Sorry, you specifically said you think we need a completion of the Gerwood Area Plan and then did you say Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan update or you want to master the?
Same, same. They're the same thing. And so, so, and, and you're, that's exactly the point I was going to make was, I believe the best case for Gerwood is no on this ordinance and a move straight into the next step to commission an update to the two thousand and six Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan, which is the area master plan and should start the development conversation to say, that's the document that says, how do we use this land? That master plan falls under the umbrella of the Gerwood Area Plan, but, and it'll feed the Gerwood Area Plan, it doesn't need the Gerwood Area Plan to, to exist. And so, so it's my belief that we want no on this and we're not NIMBYs, we say we want, so let us use this update of the two thousand and six plan, you know, completion of the area master plan to continue the momentum and design the right project and then put it out to bid and see who will build it. You know, with ten million dollar investment coming from the municipality, with what we know anecdotally about value, with everything, you know, like trust that, that what we have, somebody wants and that we can, we can actually take everything that we've learned here, all this enthusiasm and channel it into something awesome. And so that to me is the ask, vote no and go back to the drawing board, design something with the community collaboratively, put it out to bid, make it competitive, follow the normal disposal guidelines that aren't through this backdoor process. I mean, there's a, there's a whole guideline of how you do it well, work with the Advisory Commission, just do it all above the line. That's what we're asking for. And, and that's in the best, that's in the best interest of Gerwood and the larger Anchorage budget.
I don't, I disagree with you about the, the different plans, but that's.
Okay.
That, I'm going to disagree with something.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I like to say, and, and let's do both, I'm on board with both.
I'm aware of time. Do you have, kind of was it time question?
Yeah, just a comment, you know, I've been through this since day one with all of you as we've been sitting here as staff, a lot of times we have to bite our tongue on these things and I will continue to do that. But I think what's really important is that Gerwood has a very clear and concise message as to what you want. Many times I represent Gerwood's point when I'm dealing with staff in town to get across what the community is getting and sometimes the point is not clear. And so I have to do a lot of interpretation or enhancing to help deliver the message. And, and what you're battling right now is Gerwood is seen as the NIMBYs and getting over that hurdle to say, here's what will get us to a development that is really great for both municipality of Anchorage, because you've got to remember, H L B is land owned by the whole entire community of the municipality as well for the Gerwood community. So I think as much as you can be clear with that, to sell that to the Assembly so the Assembly can turn around. And if they are going to squash this deal, they have good backing to say, here's what needs to happen before this deal moves forward. So that's what the pressure is against them right now, is that there is a deal in place that the administration has moved into and the Assembly needs to come up with an excuse to say why that deal is no, no longer good.
And I think that our role would be to have a, have a specific answer to that on Monday.
Correct.
We can do a straw poll or we can just postpone, I think either is, I'd be happy with motion for either. I'm not postponed, sorry, the Chair.
Adjourn, I'll, I'll move to adjourn, I'm, I'm coming. Feedback with that.
Can I get a second? Second, thank you, thank you, everybody. This was a really productive conversation.